This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 9th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in these meetings are gathering hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remain both. The members of the city council and the public participating remote remain mute under recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time of public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
J.P.
Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
J.T.
Terrell.
Here.
Owen Zaret.
Present.
Let's take a minute of momentous silence. Please join us for the place of allegiance. The place of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. At this moment, I'm going to recognize the fire chief, Chief Norris. He's going to introduce the new member of the CERT team. Chief.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, city councilors. Tonight's a unique opportunity to bring before the city leadership the Community Emergency Response Team for the city of East Hampton. This team has been in existence for well over almost 20 years now. And over the last, I'll say year, couple, a little bit longer, but at least over the last year, we've had 10 new members come forward and complete the initial training for this CERT community response team. The initial training is approximately anywhere between 70 and 80 hours. And then, once they become members, they continue monthly train-ins and other deployments required to be ongoing members of the team. When you look at the East Hampton CERT team, it's certainly, at least in my eyes, a model organization that other communities across the state can kind of emulate and kind of, you know, build their own community response team around. This team, over the years, has deployed for state responses for tornadoes and certainly local responses here for planned events and certainly emergencies as well. Speaking for the fireside, we added them to our run card. So anytime there's a multiple alarm event here in the city of East Hampton, they will automatically be notified. They'll do their internal notifications and they'll respond to that scene in a coordinated fashion to assist with those operations. Essentially, in terms of their training and capabilities, just some quick examples for you to understand what they bring to this community for resources. They bring the ability to assist with traffic control. They have the fire scene. They can help with rolling of hose, assisting with rehabilitation and rehab supplies on the fire scene. They can assist with air bottles filling and other logistical needs, shuttling equipment back and forth to the scene. I talked about wide area searches. Their capabilities really are pretty vast. And that's why we felt it was important to, number one, recognize the team and its entirety here and what they've done over the years and the value they bring to this community and region. And then certainly bringing on those 10 new members here tonight for all of you to get to know them, see them, put a name to a face, and just to say to this entire team how appreciative we are for all the services you provide to the community. So at this time, I'll actually ask, we have two members here. We have Jason Dunham from the fire and we have Detective Briggs from the police department, who are the liaisons for both agencies. If I can have them come up here with me. And then I'll have the CERT team commander, Steve McGrath, and the lead trainer is John Zimmerman. If I can have both of you come up here as well. And then with the 10 new members, if you can kind of...
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Just one second. For the public, I have a question.
Please.
First, thank you for everybody who is in this team. For someone in the community who want to join the CERT team, they have to be East Hampton resident, how they can find about this program?
So they don't need to be an East Hampton resident, although that is nice to have because most of their services are provided here. But they can reach out to myself or Chief Scrivener, and then we can get them in contact with the liaisons for both agencies.
Perfect. Thank you.
So you're welcome. And then the 10 new members, if I can have the 10 new members come stand in the front here. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off the names of the 10 new members and I'll have Mr. McGrath and Mr. Zimmerman hand you your certificates.
And chief, for the record, the ads come out of there?
Perfect.
If you want to use that one.
It would be best to position them, Mr. President.
For that one.
This way?
Yes.
So face that camera.
Be sure to smile.
Yep. So what I'd like to do is, as I... Please hold any applause. I want to just make sure everyone hears the names of the new members that go down the list here. So in terms of the new members to the team, we have Angelique Baker, Joan Crowell, Amy Gleason, Dennis Glick, Anthony O'Brien, Bob Parent, Linda Riley, Sarah Sinkowitz, David Vanas, and Ed Wagner. So those are the 10 new members. If we can have Mr. Zimmerman, Mr. McGrath come forward and hand their certificates.
Sure.
You get...
As long as you're facing the camera.
These are the 10 survivors of 18 people that started this program about two years ago. So that's pretty good.
So why don't you go ahead and hand out those certificates to them.
So where's the camera?
That way.
Okay, so Angelique. Joan Crowell.
They're alphabetical.
Amy Gleason. Dennis Glick.
Dennis, hold the record. Dennis started in 2019, we figured, and then COVID stopped the training and he stuck with it.
Carter Karen. Thank you. Amy Riley. Thank you. Sarah Sinkowitz. Thank you. David Vanas. Thank you. Ed Wagner. Thank you.
We've got one more that wasn't able to make it because of being called out on emergency.
So again, as everyone's up here in front of the city leadership, again, thank you for all you have done thus far and certainly looking forward to continuing to work with all of you as a valuable resource for emergency responses and planned events here in the city of East Hampton. So thank you all very much. And then finally, Mr. President, if it's okay with you, can we get one group picture of the city leadership with the team in front?
Sure, take a picture. Let's do it.
So everyone can kind of get in the front of the city council? I'll get...
Please be there.
I need the man to stand there, bad hand.
No, you guys get...
I have my CERT orange shirt.
I know, I know. I guess I could stand on the chair.
All right, we got everyone in now to count to three. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. And again, thank you, city council.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Just going to wait until... So while they do that, I will take a motion to approve the minute of September 18.
So both.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minute of September 18. Those want any further discussion? For those want in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention or abstention? Motion passes. Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic not listed under the public hearing. If you are here to talk about the resolution, about the resolution or anything that is not part of the public hearing, this is the opportunity to talk to the council. Please state your name and address for the record and we're going to give you three minutes to talk to the council. Anyone go to the podium, please. I'm going to start with the people in person and then I'm going to, with the people that are participating remote.
Hi, my name is Henry Morgan. I am the executive director of the Public Higher Education Network of Massachusetts, which is a student-led education advocacy nonprofit that focuses on building free public higher education. I've also been organizing as a volunteer around mushroom decriminalization for the better part of three years now, working on municipal resolutions across the state to push for decriminalization, to make it a low priority for law enforcement, to make sure that we're focusing on harm reduction and not criminalization. Recently, we've seen the new approach Political Action Committee, a DC lobbyist organization, come in and put forward some amazing legislation that would decriminalize home growing and would decriminalize small amounts of possession. Although it does also set up a regulatory model that would open up the door for this to be a life-saving treatment for people with treatment-resistant depression, which is incredibly vital. That being said, I have some concerns about the way that it's written and the way the regulatory commission is set up. It gives undue influence for businesspeople and people in the pharmaceutical industry. And I think that it's really important that we work together to address these concerns, create democratic accountability, create democracy and transparency within the commission, and ensure that the voices of indigenous people and herbalists, whose tradition is steeped, who this tradition, the psychedelic medicine, is steeped in, have an adequate representation on the board, which is why I think it's so vital that we address these concerns through legislation. And this resolution does address these concerns. And so I begrudgingly do support the initiative. I will vote yes on it and I will tell people to vote yes on it, but with the added stipulation that we have an incredible amount of work to do in the coming legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Sean McDonough and I'm a senior at UMass Amherst studying civil engineering. I'm an aspiring professional civil engineer and I hope to contribute to my community, state, and country through my work. Today, I would like to share also why I support psychedelic legalization. First of all, it has had a long history of use, especially within indigenous cultures across the world. Secondly, our society is currently facing a mental health epidemic that you can see every day. Most of us are affected in some way, either ourselves or our friends and family. Psychedelic medicine has shown promising results in resolving many mental health issues, including but not limited to addiction, anxiety, depression, and PTSD. And this is all backed by science. Many of my friends and family members suffer from issues such as this. And seeing my loved ones in pain makes me feel hopeless and powerless. And knowing that they can be helped through psychedelic treatment paired with current psychotherapeutic methods gives me hope. I also believe we should prevent regulatory capture by limiting the amount of businessmen and financial advisors on the regulatory commission to two out of the seven positions. I believe the other positions should be filled mostly with people with indigenous or herbal expertise because these communities have historically had knowledge and resources for successful implementation of psychedelic medicines. I don't believe big pharmaceutical companies should have a hand in the implementation of these psychedelics. And now I would ask you to vote yes on the resolution in support of valid measure number four, and I will also be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take a pause in the public speak time because we scheduled a public hearing at 6:15. I will open the public speak time once again we finish with the public hearing. So you're going to have the opportunity to talk to the council about any other topic, including the resolution again, if anyone want to talk in favor or against it. But we have to go to the public hearing. I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two hearings tonight out of finance. Both were approved two to zero with one person not being able to be there. The first is an interdepartmental transfer of $48,666.42 from the PEG access account to the PEG access account. I think we all know the drill at this point, but for the benefit of the public, we receive money from the cable company through fees when people have cable subscriptions and we sort of act as a pass-through entity to send that money to East Hampton Media to provide all sorts of great services, including hosting these meetings and broadcasting them. So I would just like to note, as I've said before, that this amount is steadily declining as you're seeing more and more people cut the cable. It has been kind of, over this term, it's been notable. So just something that I just want people to keep in mind. That being said, in terms of the matter before us, which is whether or not to transfer this money, there's really no reason not, why not to.
Any council have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Seeing none, Councilor Peak.
All right, I'll make this in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $48,666.42 to be transferred from PEG access account, $48,666.42 to be transferred to PEG access account, $48,666.42. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to give approval to spend from the PEG access receipts reserved account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for interdepartmental transfer of $48,666.42 to the PEG access account for the cable-related purpose. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Councilor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item is a $100 supplemental appropriation for the Mass Trails Grant Match. That would be coming from...
It's $100,000. You said $100. I know what you meant.
Yeah, a thousand times what I said. Yeah, my bad. So yeah, $100,000. $100 would not really be worth having. Yeah. To, from capital stabilization. For councilors, I think you'll recall, we had a conversation about this a few months back. The bike path, there are some safety issues in it, routes coming up and splitting the pavement and causing problems. And so the city applied for a Mass Trails grant. We received the grant and now as part of that, we need to match those funds. So this $100,000, again, is coming from capital stabilization and would be used to supplement that so that we can fix up the bike trail and keep it being an asset to the city. And once again, we did approve this two to zero.
Thank you, councilor. Any council have any questions, comments? Councilor Zaret.
More of a comment. You know, these rail trails have become an integral part of our, both transportation as well as recreation here in Massachusetts. We just passed, I think, a very meaningful resolution to make sure that we do our best to connect across the state to Boston. Riding the trail at any given time throughout the years is kind of this constant need for upkeep. And obviously, I support this wholeheartedly, but I think that we need to, as a state, start thinking more about how to fund these in a more sustainable manner, just as we have Chapter 90 money for roads. We're going to really start thinking as we increase infrastructure of these bike paths, how we're going to have, be, need to be able to give money to municipalities on a regular basis to support what we have. I support this wholeheartedly, but we have to be more forward-thinking on Beacon Hill. So that's all.
Any other, Councilor Derby?
So tomorrow, I will surpass 300 miles of commuting to work since school started on August 28th. So my body, my bike, probably my dentist, thanks us for doing this because it is very bumpy and it is, honestly, it's kind of dangerous. Like if you hit one and you're not expecting, now the leaves are down. Like this is a safety issue, so it's important and it, you know, it's a valuable resource to the community, so.
Thank you, councilor. Any other council? I saw Mr. Nettelman. I don't know if he want to add something. DPW director?
No, I don't, no. Good evening, everyone. Greg Nunnellman, Director of Public Works. No, I don't really have anything to add. I was just here if there was any questions that came up. We're really looking forward to getting this project moving and this appropriation being finalized is a big step towards that, than being able to get out there and get the work started, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kuzinski.
Just a quick question for Mr. Nunnellman. That was, how soon can the project get going and what do you expect as a completion date for this project?
We need to have, I'm hoping to have the work underway first, first part of the spring and we need to have it completed by the end of June. So we want to hit the ground running here as soon as all this is complete. We have contracts in place with the H.P. for the construction and construction oversight, final design documents. That'll outline all the repair prioritizations, so just looking forward to getting this, getting this where we're at, getting to work, so.
And a quick follow-up, which I think is a natural one. With Councilor Derby's comments about the trail now, are we doing everything we possibly can? Do you need anything else from us to help mark those areas that are dangerous during the interim before the...
No, we've got, we've got some pretty good documents that we had created as part of our grant application and have a pretty good idea of where the worst areas are and they'll be prioritized based on funding and bid out as an ad alternate so we can really stretch every dollar we're able to get, to get as much work out of this as we possibly can.
Thank you.
We will need to, though, while I have you all, we will need to have a conversation, possibly next year's budget, about where the rail trail falls as far as it being maintained by a city department because it's not officially the responsibility of the Department of Public Works. So, you know, a conversation about a transition from the Bike Path Committee to my department or our department needs to, needs to move along, so.
Thanks, President Derby.
I just wanted to address Councilor Prentice's comment. Most of the areas that are kind of dangerous have been spray painted. Right now, because of the leaves being down, it is kind of hard to see, but, you know, I don't think that, there's no, I don't think the DPW has anything...
I didn't know if there was anything like a flag on a tree nearby just to warn everybody who might be using the trail, hey, you may not see it under the leaves, but somewhere around here, we got a problem, so be careful.
And it's not, it's not catastrophic. It's, you know, if you're not expecting it and you're, you know, riding with one hand, it could knock you off.
Right.
But, you know, if you're expecting bumpy terrain, which is a good expectation for the bike trail, then you'll be fine.
I especially think of little children and folks who, young people who may be out riding their bikes, not really thinking about everything that they maybe should be attending to and all of a sudden, anyway.
Any other council? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Seeing none, Councilor Peak.
All right, I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $100,000 to be transferred from capital stabilization, $100,000 to be transferred to Mass Trails Grant Program Revenue, $100,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: this funding will serve as a match funding for the Mass Trails Grant Man-Hand Rail Trail Pavement Restoration and Repair Project.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the supplemental appropriation of $100,000 for the Mass Trail Grant Match. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. I will take a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Now is the time to continue in the public speak time. So if anyone in person want to say something, please state your name and address for the record and please go to the podium. And you will have three minutes.
Hello, East Hampton city councilors. Thank you for welcoming me here. I'm Graham Moore. I'm the Educational Outreach Director for the S-on4 campaign, advancing the psychedelics valid measure. I'm also a lifelong Massachusetts resident and I was also a grassroots advocate for this prior to joining the campaign. This is really deeply personal to me because I am an obsessive compulsive disorder patient who found tremendous healing and recovery from debilitating symptoms using psilocybin. I was empowered to talk to my psychologist and my psychiatrist at MGH, thanks to a deep prioritization resolution passed in Cambridge in 2021, similar to the one you passed here. I've also been a caregiver for two loved ones with severe suicidality leading to hospitalization, including my best friend who died by suicide in 2013. What was that noise? It doesn't matter, not time or anything?
No, no.
Anyway, I really, really am grateful to Councilor Zaret and everybody here considering this resolution, support of this policy. I also want to recognize the good faith concerns of people in the community who want to make sure that this is better than it is. I didn't write this legislation. I think it's great, the foundation of treating substance use as a health issue, not a criminal issue, and providing additional options for people who need it is great, but we can improve it with the input of the community post-passage. And I would encourage anybody with concerns to reach out, to reach out to me or others on our team who are in this state who really care. So thank you so much. Please, please vote in support of this resolution. I think it will do a lot of good and help a lot of people. I really quickly also want to say I have a found members, a psychiatrist, I have friends who are doctors. One of my loved ones is hospitalized at McLean Hospital in Massachusetts, one of the best hospitals in the, in the country. I know what the top level of psychiatric care, conventional psychiatric care can provide and for too many, it's not, it's not enough. I know somebody in McLean who's been there for almost a year, is on more than 12 medications and is now looking at being put into a state hospital for life. And, you know, people, people like that deserve something else. They can try. So thank you so much for your help and support.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Lee Camso. My name is Anobuswell. I'm a local and I just wanted to come out and share my story with psychedelics. I come from a family of addiction and poverty and as a teenager, I fell into those same patterns of drinking, smoking, and basically addiction was running my life. For many periods of time, I just wanted to get high. I, it was just completely absorbing my life. When I came into psychedelics, I was able to resolve those deeper problems, those spiritual problems, the problems with my family, within myself, and I've been able to be stable now for eight years from alcohol, tobacco, and other substances through psychedelic work. And I believe that by legalizing these substances that we can make this opportunity of healing and growth accessible for more people, like me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have participated in person?
Greetings, council. My name is Stephen Briel. I'm a resident of Westfield and a local business owner here in East Hampton, a community which I love. I'm the owner of Go with the Flow. We provide sensory deprivation and it's a healing process, which I won't get into that now, but a lot of that has led me from my use of psychedelics. Like Tyler, I used to struggle with alcohol abuse and psychedelics have led me to, I don't drink anymore. It led me to my career now where I am helping this community. I have nothing prepared to say tonight. I'm really speaking from the heart. I really just want to second what Henry said so eloquently, that I don't know what the answer is, what's happening. I don't know what's happening with number four. I just know that... I just know that for myself personally and for people that want to use these substances, particularly mushrooms, which is like completely organic, I'm not really speaking for MDMA or some of these other synthetic LSD substances, mushrooms has helped me. And I just know that people who want to use these should not be put in jail. I'm not saying everyone should use them. I used to have more of a soapbox where I had that stance. I don't think that anymore. I think that people who do want to use them should not be, like I said, thrown in jail. I don't know who's going to be controlling this, these corporations. Again, what Henry said, I think there should be a little more heart and soul put into this. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what the answer is. All I can say is it's helped me, it's helped me heal, it's helped me heal my community. And whatever resolution Henry is putting forth, I know he's been working with Owen, I completely support that. And if anyone has any need to follow up, Owen, I'd love to speak with you. And thank you for out being here tonight and supporting this. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Christopher Fiatto. I'm currently a resident of Holyoke, but I've grown up in East Hampton schools my whole life. I work in East Hampton. I also didn't plan on speaking tonight, but not to be redundant, but considering what everyone's talking about, I think it's important to show maybe the face of some of the people that this stuff has helped. And as someone who has struggled with addiction in their family since birth, both, you know, generational addiction, primarily the opiate and opioid crisis that's continuing to get worse. I lost my mother a couple of years ago to fentanyl overdose. I've struggled with addiction to opiates for about half my life. I'm 34 now. I've been clean for a little while, but a large part of that is through use of psilocybin specifically, which is considered very sacred medicine in some cultures, and we don't tend to recognize that way. I also utilize the mental health systems and I've been seeing the same therapist for about five years. But what I've learned in my own experience, working with these for a long time, is there's certain problems, especially people struggling with addiction, the root cause of our problems can be very hard to figure out for some of us. And there's some deeper work that sometimes our Western medicine system doesn't seem equipped to really get to the root of some of these issues. And nothing against that, because I have gotten a lot of help from, especially my current therapist, but I just want to, again, second everyone's voice who's our, everyone who spoke said, spoke from the heart very well. And again, I just wanted to add another face to who this has helped and also I should say, many people do consider this a drug and I'm sure, hearing this from someone who struggled with addiction, it's like, well, one drug for another, but reforming this more as looking at it as a medicine can be highly beneficial, but we can also lie to ourselves that same way. So, it's a very thin line, fine line to walk in this hopefully eventual legalizing process of something that can help a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to the people that are participating remote. I will start apologizing in case I mispronounced your name, but I will start with Ella.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. I would like to also submit my testimony in favor of the resolution, support of question four that you guys are going to be considering tonight. I think psychedelic legalization is incredibly important and powerful thing. You know, people's personal stories that people have already said today are so much more important than any statistics that I could bring, but I just want to mention some studies that have been done where after just one experience of psilocybin in a therapeutic context, people have been able to quit smoking, quit alcohol, improve their PTSD, like these are incredibly powerful medicines. And along that vein, I really believe that the regulatory commission that will be created in the ballot question, as it's written right now, is going to be harmful for these potential good effects. The regulatory commission includes mostly business people, which means that there's a potential for, you know, profit to be put as the biggest motive when regulating these substances. And I think we really need to be listening to the community, to indigenous people who of course have been using these substances for generations and also who have been historically punished for using these medicines, and herbalists and people that are going to be considering their community members first over profit. So that's why I support this resolution that you were voting on tonight. I support the ballot initiative, but I do want to make sure that we address these concerns in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Beatrice?
Hi there. Can everyone in the city council room see me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Beatrice. I'm also here to speak about question four and supporting it, voting yes. I know it's a quite a good discussion tonight. I'm, again, Beatrice Rogers. I'm a local student at UMass and in addition to like my traditional academic involvement at UMass, I'm also helped to facilitate community groups on the campus, one of which being the Multidisciplinary Psychedelic Club, where we're involved in, like driven to educate and reduce harm in our community. We built this community through like conversations, connectedness, discourse like this today. We really strive to like provide a forum for students to talk about psychedelics, their scientific, medical, cultural, and philosophical implications. With like this mission to like facilitate mainstream cultural acceptance of psychedelics, I have spent much time discussing with local people, not just students, community members that come to these meetings to talk about like what psychedelics are and what it means to them. And oftentimes, in my own experience and in the experience of other people, it's medicine, not necessarily the type of medicine that you visit your GP for, rather like it's a medicine for like the mind and it's a medicine for the soul and for the spirit and it's medicine for our culture. This medicine is accessible for those who need it and it's contextualized by those who are very experienced in its use. I think that this process, what I'm seeing and experiencing being involved in this community can continue through its legalization, which I 100% support, but I also would like to highlight the incredible danger that it poses to well-being and healthy growth when medicine is operated and administered for profit. When there is an incentive to capitalize off of needs that are being sought, those needs are seldom met. Take the case of Oregon, for example, who has legalized psychedelics. Psychedelic medicine, people are being charged thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars for psychedelic treatment, which is just not acceptable. So with regulatory capture comes like extreme capitalization and with capitalization comes extreme financial barriers, which limit people's access to this medicine. Psychedelics are changing people's lives. We are all here to serve each other, that's why we're here, that's why the city council is here, to serve, to be here for the people. But if the power is not in the hands of the people, we lose like the undeniable effectiveness that power has. So, I really implore you all here today to, you know, not just, not just those on the council, but everyone here, to use your power to invest in our future as like a healthy and a happy society.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you, it's already three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. I just want to say I support question four and for putting psychedelic medicine in the hands of the people that use it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Nina?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me speak today. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. My name is Nina Salem and I'm currently a student at UMass Amherst studying neuroscience. I fully support the legalization of psychedelics because I truly believe that they're a lifesaving medicine with the potential to help countless individuals. We've heard so many testimonies today about people, how it's helped their life, how it's helped their communities, and the research is there to back it. I have a friend who suffered from debilitating PTSD and had the opportunity to use psilocybin and is now able to live a full life. And as a student who is studying neuroscience, I have read countless research reports revealing the incredible healing abilities it has. And I hope someday that I may be able to use this knowledge in something like psychedelic assisted therapy to support those people in needs. While I do urge the council to vote yes on ballot measure four, I do have some concerns that Bea and Ella also mentioned. I'm concerned with the lack of representation on the regulatory commission. I'm concerned that it's mostly made up of businessmen. I think that we could go wrong there because I believe that this is truly medicine for healing and I think that when it becomes something for profit and not with community interest in mind, that's something that it, like how Beatrice mentioned with what's happening in Oregon, how it's so expensive, I really hope that someday when, if I ever have the opportunity to help people, it's not just people who can afford it, but people who need it. I think that there should be representation of mental health professionals. I think there should be representation of indigenous people who have been using this as medicine for thousands of years. So, I do really support this measure and I really urge you to vote yes, but I also think that there's a lot of work to be done on this. So, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Grace?
Hello, East Hampton Town Council. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I'm also a UMass student and lifelong Massachusetts resident. I'm studying economics and math and I also wanted to speak up in support of the resolution to support ballot measure four and specifically the, specifically I wanted to talk about the proposed resolution to that, which was, I wanted to talk about how psychedelic usage has already helped many people with addictions and mental illnesses. A lot of people's personal testimonies have touched on that. And I'm also amazed already the support from the community and making this kind of medication more accessible and decriminalized in my home state and I hope that people will turn out in November. You know, I'm here to support the resolution to increase transparency, decrease regulatory capture, and to make indigenous perspectives more heard. As other testimonies have noted, psilocybin is a completely natural medicine. This isn't something that was cooked up in a lab or anything like that. This is just a fungus that you can find on the ground and as such, it's also been historically used by generations for, you know, people who have inhabited this land. And, you know, since we have those perspectives that exist of indigenous people, herbalists, like people who are involved in natural medicine and who are involved in this kind of medicine already, really those are the kinds of specialists that we want to be looking for for this particular kind of substance. So, I think that also we have to be concerned about making sure to balance the kind of power structures that we have in terms of prioritizing one kind of voice to be heard on the council. And I think that if we add some more community oriented voices and some more natural medicine oriented voices and make that more, you know, more balanced on the council, then that could go a long way into continuing to prioritize the interests of the community as we make these great steps for the decriminalization of psychedelics. Thank you guys again for your time and I urge you to consider the resolution and to vote yes for the ballot measure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, poll is speak time, official close. Communication for elected officials, supporters and committee. Any councillor have anything for tonight? Councillor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I just want to acknowledge, I wasn't intending to say this, but there's just a real tragedy unfolding down in Florida right now and I just want to extend my hopes, concerns that people will remain safe. We have a lot of East Hampton residents, I'm sure, who spend part of their time here in East Hampton and part of their time down in Florida, particularly for the winter months. And also, just want to acknowledge that I have family in Florida, one of whom is, is in the Sarasota, Tampa Bay region. He is a superintendent and he is responsible for the emergency evacuation shelter, right? He's a superintendent, but that was a part of his job description, right? And so, I think a lot of people are really stepping up and taking on responsibilities that that's not their normal everyday job. And so, just want to acknowledge everyone who's trying to keep people safe down there. So that was just a personal thing, I apologize, but I think we have a lot of residents who are going to be impacted by this. Also, we, this year we had, we did for the first time the Municipal Leadership Academy. We had five residents who participated. It was a very well-received learning opportunity for those residents and I think it was a learning opportunity for our departments to be able to share their experiences with residents and their work and everything that they, their departments do for residents in the city. We had got some, a lot of positive feedback from that in terms of people talking about, "I had no idea this is how the city ran," right? Which is, which was a real main kind of point of that. But also, it was intended to humanize our, our city staff. I think a lot of residents don't understand the challenges, the amount of work that our department heads and our department staff put in. And so, it was a real opportunity for residents to come face to face with their, our department heads and ask questions and learn about their, their work as well as their commitment to residents and to the city in general. So that was a really positive experience. But with that, we're actually going to run it again and it's going to start on January 6th. And I'm hoping next week, we will put out the application, give it lots of time to get residents involved in that. We're hoping for at least 15 residents to participate, myself, councillor Smith, and President Gomez, who at that time will hopefully be state rep, Gomez, given the fact that it's January 6th. But looking forward to actually embedding within that kind of municipal and state partnership and how those two, how the two kind of entities work together, so that's some exciting opportunity to think about how to build that into the conversations. So, just want to let people know that that's something that we're going to be doing again in January and hopefully we'll have a lot to learn. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other councillor? Councillor Sarre?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. The first, I just wanted to give credit and give a shout out to everyone who organized, participated, and volunteered for Porch Fest this last weekend. This being the second year was an astounding success and they expanded into precinct three from precinct two. It ran like a charm. Members of the CERT team who were here earlier and some other members of public safety were very helpful and visible. And so, very much looking forward to building on the success as we move hopefully into next year. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that we're, we altered our calendar a little bit this year. We had a conversation when we set the calendar this year to avoid conflicts with the Jewish holidays. Normally, we would have met last Wednesday and then next Wednesday and the council in the utmost a sensitivity chose not to meet on the first night of Rosh Hashanah, which would have been the Jewish New Year. And so, during this time where we're between two high holidays for our Jewish constituents and Jewish people, I just wanted to offer my support and solidarity at this time, as certainly we should for all faiths during High Holy Days. This time of the High Holidays was punctuated by the first anniversary of October 7th, which was a time of great pain for Jewish people whose reverberations have certainly been felt every day since in the last year with collective pain for many communities, as we've seen pretty much every day in the news. um, as we've seen pretty much every day in the news. Um, I had an opportunity, uh, the other day to attend a commemoration of that day. I think it was a very meaningful moment for both Jewish people and Jewish allies to come together and reflect and to mourn and to stand in solidarity. I appreciate the elected officials who took time to be there, including our mayor La Chappelle. Um, you know, this is a time of probably the worst manifestations of antisemitism and Jewish hate in this country. Um, 10,000 reported incidents of antisemitism in the last year, which is the highest ever since these incidents have been measured since 1979. Uh, the FBI notes that 15% of all hate crimes and 68%, 68% of all religious hate crimes are directed towards Jewish people. And to put that in context, this is a group of people in this country that represents 2% of the American population. So I think last, last year, very thoughtfully, we passed a non-binding resolution against antisemitism. Non-binding doesn't mean not acting. The resolution laid out a number of actions we could take to protect and stand with our Jewish friends and neighbors. The recent statistics demonstrate that there is a concerning rise in anti-Jewish sentiment among students, uh, both college age and younger. And so over the last year, I've reached out to our schools to ask for some form of policy training or education or action plan to address this rising tide of Jewish hatred. These statistics don't stop at East Hampton's borders. Despite my efforts, I haven't seen any sort of meaningful collaboration or policy offered, but I'm hopeful that, uh, with time and convincing with the statistics and data that I just mentioned, that we will move forward. And so today, again, I'm imploring our superintendent and the chair of our school committee and our mayor, who sits on that committee, to reflect on these concerning statistics, uh, something I concern, I, I personally feel is a public safety epidemic. Offer clear action plan how we can teach this generation of this kind of hate has no place here. And certainly I call on all my colleagues again to reaffirm the work that we did last year to stand with the Jewish people, especially in this dire time of need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zaret. Any other councilors? And you know, Mayor, um, La Chappelle already told me the nothing for tonight, but just in case she changed her mind, um, but the mayor, anything for tonight? Okay, okay. No?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay.
President Gomez.
Thank you. Uh, correspondent announcement for the president, vice president in communication, uh, please, Vice President Derby?
I just have one. I know that, uh, all of us here are big supporters of City Space, um, and they are going to be having a fundraiser this month. Uh, it's a bicentennial fundraising event, uh, which is a, um, for Old Town Hall, um, and it's a celebration of the 1974 Winterland concert that the Grateful Dead put on, uh, and Mind Left Body will be playing, I believe it's at um 8:00 PM, but it's October 26th at City Space. So if anybody's interested in that, all the proceeds go to City Space.
Thank you. I just want to say something quick. Um, first, I want to say thank you to the mayor, uh, Mayor La Chappelle. I watched the last meeting that I wasn't here. I was in Houston in a conference. It's painful that so many communities forget about what the Hispanic are being doing for United States. The Hispanic Heritage Month is to recognize what the Hispanic in the United States been doing for this country. And watching some multiple meetings from whole Massachusetts in the United States, it's painful to watch that not that many people care about it. We have an election in almost three weeks. And one of the hottest topics is about immigration. And a huge chunk of percentage of those immigrants are Latinos. We are, we are crazy to take pictures, to talk about in favor of the Latino community, the Hispanic community. And we take every opportunity to do so. When we have the opportunity to talk in favor of it and mention great stuff that we've been doing in this country, we don't have that, we don't have that many voices. But we have one in East Hampton and I'm glad that the Mayor La Chappelle did a proclamation in behalf of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Like the only Latino elected here in the city, Mayor, thank you. That was a great thing, not for me, that was a great thing for our community. As you remember, and I'm being a little personal here, but as you remember, um, at the graduation, at the high school, I say to the mayor, we're doing something good here. Because of the color of the people at the graduation was people that look exactly like me. So we're doing good. We're doing some, we're doing something really good in East Hampton. And I know you're being part of it. Thank you, thank you, Nicole. Report of standing committees, finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, uh, met two weeks ago now, uh, to discuss the items that we, uh, voted on at the public hearing tonight. Uh, we will be meeting again, uh, in a week.
Sixteen?
Yes, uh, but, uh, I will be, uh, we are going to move it up half an hour to 5:00 PM for this one, uh, meeting.
5:00 PM or 6:00 PM?
It's usually 5:30.
Okay, so it's going to be?
So we're moving it to 5:00.
Oh, to 5:00, okay.
Yes, uh, because there's, yeah, scheduling thing. Um, and at that meeting, we'll presumably be discussing the appropriation that we'll be introducing in a little bit. Um, and, uh, time permitting, we might continue to discuss the, uh, salaries, uh, for elected officials appointed committees, but we've not come to a resolution on that issue, uh, yet.
We have to ex- extend?
Oh, we sure do.
Especially that, that one.
Yeah, uh, we sure do. Uh, I would request a, um, extension to the end of the year, I suppose, because 90 days would be slightly too long.
90 days?
Uh, well, let's call it 90 days, let's call it a 60-day extension. Uh, I would request a 60-day extension, uh, to the, to that one to give us some time to, uh, just continue to work through a couple of those things.
Second? I have a motion and a second to extend the chair to require review of salary of elected officials appointed to the committee, uh, for 60 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes.
That concludes.
Yeah, so public safety, Councilor Zaret?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We met yesterday at 6:00 PM in room one, uh, strictly to focus on the, um, traffic and pedestrian safety item on West Street. Uh, we had interested, uh, invested members of the public there to once again, uh, explain their concerns about both, um, issues with speeding as well as concerns about pedestrian safety, as well as canine safety, um, on West Street. Um, we had two members of the police department as well as the DPW director there, um, and uh, came up with a few good potential solutions, um, so the first being that, uh, within the next, I'd say, three to four weeks, uh, but it's kind of an unpredictable schedule because of contractor, uh, the DPW director committed to painting, uh, fog lines on West Street throughout, which will narrow the appearance of lanes and, and is a well-known traffic and speed mitigation, um, uh, tactic. Uh, so that's something that can definitely happen. Uh, we discussed things like speed humps, um, as well as the potential needs for crosswalks with rapid flashing beacons. Um, uh, there's, both are, both of those items have issues in terms of expense, uh, certainly something we can come back to. And then crosswalks also runs into the issue that there has to be sidewalks present or at least an ADA ramp that's built. Uh, neither of them are out of the question, but both items are in the $50,000 range plus, uh, and so that's something that we have to put on the back burner. Uh, another item we did discuss, which, uh, the director indicated he would, um, entertain would be to, uh, put in a request for a couple of permanent traffic feed, uh, speed feedback signs on that road. Um, so that obviously requires both a request for an appropriation and then an approval of the appropriation, uh, at the executive level with the discussion at city council. So, uh, I certainly will advocate for that, but stay tuned. Um, also, we discussed signage. Um, they will do a review of the road and determine if that can be, um, set strictly to 25 miles per hour throughout, which would obviate the need for, uh, some of the other items we discussed, including, uh, decreased speed ahead, et cetera. So we're waiting to hear from him about that study. So all very encouraging and I think overall, the, uh, the fog lines will make a huge difference and we agreed, once those are painted, then to do another study with the mobile signs that the, um, the police department has, um, and then come back to looking at average speeds and how that's affected and see if we have to, uh, deploy other mitigation, um, options. Uh, that's all we talked about yesterday. I, I did review the fact, um, with the committee, uh, just in terms of, um, roadway infrastructure and public safety items, that there was a meeting with, um, a business on Cottage Street where there were some concerns about both parking and pedestrian safety in terms of crossing. And myself and, um, Acting Chief Scribner had a very productive meeting with that business who is very invested in making sure that people are both parking appropriately on Cottage Street as well as crossing on appropriate side, uh, crosswalks. And we discussed some mitigation, um, strategies there as well. Um, our next meeting should be at the typical time, the second Tuesday of, uh, November, which I could tell you right now, unless someone else gets to it before I do.
The 12th?
The 12th, yes, at 6:00 PM, hopefully in room one. Um, and then, um, uh, something we need to get to, uh, is the ordinance review committee final report. I think there's a few items on there that probably need to be determined if we can remove them without prejudice, but I obviously need to discuss that with my committee members. So at this time, I'd like to request extensions both for the ordinance review committee final report and the review of traffic language and traffic rules of order, which will also be a discussion topic at our next, uh, meeting. A 90-day extension requested for both of those, please in the form of a motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a seconds to extend those items for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes.
And again, we're, we're intend to meet November 12th, 6:00 PM in room, hopefully in room one, but to be determined, thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Zaret. Appointment, Councilor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we have not had any appointments before us since our last meeting, um, and we do not have any in new business, so, uh...
Need to extend an item?
Yes, yep. Um, so when a new, uh, appointee comes forward, that's when we will schedule that meeting. So, um, I have an ongoing agenda item for the appointment committee, um, for board committee vacancy review and recruitment. Um, I would like to, uh, in the form of a motion, request a 90-day extension.
Second?
I have a motion and a seconds to extend for 90 days that, that item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Riley. Ordinance, Councilor Denham?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, on October 15th at 6:00 PM, we have a joint meeting, um, with the planning board to address the zoning ordinance amendment proposals, um, to amend section 10.0960 regarding temporary election signage, as well as to amend, uh, to add definition of surveyor. Um, we will be, um, as I said, meeting, uh, October 15th at 6:00 PM. Uh, in terms of, well, I'll come back to that. Um, additionally, we're going to have a regular ordinance meeting on October 15th, same night at 6:30 in conference room, um, one, um, and we're going to be addressing the, uh, agenda items that will be coming our way. Additionally, uh, in return, in regards to the, um, the request for temporary moratorium on use of sewage sludge as fertilizer, um, the agricultural commission is meeting in December, um, and I will be attending that meeting to get an update on where they are. And that's, uh, everything that our committee has to offer of council this evening.
Thank you, Councilor Denham. Propede, Councilor Zaret?
No report. Thus concludes.
Rules, Councilor Kucinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two matters tonight. Uh, both are rule changes to council rules. Uh, let's deal with one at a time. The Rules and Government Relations Committee recommends two to zero, the council amend, uh, council rule by adding council rule 15A and amending 15E. This is regard to resolutions to the council. Whenever we have a resolution, we generally attract a crowd. And oftentimes, I'm sorry to say, it's placed on the la- ladder at, late on the agenda. We'd like to move that to be early on the agenda and that's what this, this change is about, uh, so that we can, if you care to stay and watch it, our proceedings, that's wonderful to participate. However, that may not always be the case. Uh, so, uh, I would be happy to read, to make the motion. But first, let me do say, uh, this required, uh, a lot of work on, on several people and I'd like to certainly thank everyone who participated in this process, uh, to help this to happen. It was introduced, uh, by, uh, Councilor Zaret and Councilor Gomez, right?
This one was me and Counselor Peak.
Oh, it's Counselor Peak, I'm so sorry. Counselor Peak, are you here? That's why I see you. I'm sorry. Uh, so I'd be happy to make the motion if that would be appropriate and then we could discuss it if there'd be any further discussion. Uh, I move that, uh, we add rule 15A, items for immediate consideration. Items for immediate consideration must be filed with the clerk of the council. There was a typo in the draft that was sent around this weekend. It should read clerk of the council rather than city clerk. As such, uh, when submitted for inclusion to the agenda, such items will appear on the agenda to immediately follow public hearings and shall include a period of public comment specific to the item. Items for immediate consideration must comply with all other rules of the city council in regard to, in regards, uh, there another typo there, in regards to requirements for allowance at first reading or following referral to committee. Uh, along with this is an amendment to, uh, rule 5E, the Order of Business, which places, uh, items for immediate consideration to 5B on the agenda, much sooner. You can applaud.
They're speaking from experience.
That's a motion. A second?
No, I need a second.
A second?
I have a motion and a seconds to amend the city council rules, rules 5E and 15A for immediate consideration. Any further discussion? Councilor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, this is just something that I think, um, I, I had spoken a little bit to a couple of people who, and Counselor Zaret, uh, brought it forward, but I, I did say that I'd support it and, um, I, I think that it just makes a lot of sense for us to do this. We've been, uh, you know, in the very, early on, when I started in the council, we never put resolutions up for immediate consideration. They always went to rules, but a- at some point, we realized that since they're non-binding, uh, it really kind of did make sense in many cases to just, uh, vote on them that night, particularly when they concerned matters that were time sensitive. So at some point, uh, I don't think it was necessarily due to anything in particular, but we kind of, we came to this new precedent of saying, uh, well, particularly like of saying, in the charter, we said that the, we were going to set it up that you could put things on, but it had to specifically say for immediate consideration. And in general, the thing that that's been used for has been, uh, resolutions and, uh, I've, you know my feelings about the prevalent resolutions in our business, so I won't restate that. But I do think that one thing that I've noticed is that frequently, uh, our resolutions do attract a lot more people, uh, for better... a lot more people, for better or for worse, than a lot of our actual binding business. And so that often leads to situations like tonight, where there's a large group of people who speak very passionately about an issue at the very beginning of the meeting, and then sit for sometimes hours, just as we go through the procedures of appropriating funds or, you know, confirming or rejecting mayoral appointments, before finally, at the very end of the night, we finally get to the item under consideration, at which point we discuss the actual item, read it, but then at that point, they cannot speak. So if there's anything in our discussion that comes up, like that's, it's too late. And so I thought, and I won't put words in Consuls Sarret's mouth, but I think Consuls Sarret had the same thought, that it would make sense to essentially, if something is considered important enough that we are going to discuss it tonight, that it's essentially treated the same way that we would treat a public hearing, where they're just, the procedure is sort of like the procedure that we just, you know, we just saw, where like, okay, we come up, we discuss it, if there's any presentations, we can hear those presentations, and then there's a moment for people to come up and speak, and then, and then we vote on it, and then if that's the only reason why these people are here, not that I don't love having an audience when we're discussing sort of our procedural business, but I do think it would maybe make participating in these meetings a little bit easier for a lot of people if their presence past that point was a bit more optional. And so it just seemed like a thing that we should consider, given that, I really do feel like through this year, there's been a non-binding resolution for immediate consideration at near, at least one, at nearly every single meeting that we've had. And for at least half of those resolutions, there's been an audience that's shown up and then just waited through, waited in silence, after speaking passionately about it in the beginning, and then just waiting in silence for sometimes hours. So that's sort of why I felt this was a good idea, and I appreciate the Rules Committee vetting it and bringing this forward.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consul? Consul Sarret?
Yeah, so everything that he just said. And, you know, the intention behind this also was just to try to create some procedural housekeeping, so to speak. Again, as my colleague stated, you know, we often, often, certainly in the case of resolutions, have people who come out, want to speak passionately about things, and want to be able to witness the vote, for however it may go. And so I thought it was fair to the public that they should be able to have, not, again, have to wait the entire meeting, but also to really specifically attach any, that period of public speak to the item, as opposed to, for instance, speaking at our regular public speak and then getting interrupted by public hearings. This kind of gives a space, certainly in the case of resolutions, to the public. It also opens up the opportunity for other items that we vote on that aren't, that don't need a public hearing to be placed there. For instance, these two items, after they, they're not allowed to, unless you suspend the rules, they're not allowed to be placed for immediate consideration when first introduced, but certainly after the Rules Committee considers them, could then introduce them for immediate consideration and get them in a space where all of our voting is in one part of the meeting, and then the rest of it is basically reports. So that way, you know, again, the way, in terms of how we conduct our business, I felt like it was a little more neat that way. We have something else for immediate consideration today with approving the, thank you, approving the election. And so I think it just kind of ties up how we do business, and I appreciate the Rules Committee both seeing that and approving that. So thank you very much, and I think it will help the way both we do business and that the public engages in how we do business.
Thank you. Any other Consul? Consul Kusinski?
If there are no other Consuls, I just wanted to say, sometimes matters really do need to be referred to committee and not discussed under immediate consideration. That option is still available to the council by the objection of one counselor. If one counselor objects, the matter goes to wherever the council wants to send it, usually to a committee, and that gets a chance to be discussed there. So that is available. Wanted to point that out, and also to say, the vote for 2 to 0 was as a result of there being an injury to one of the counselors, and they're being unable to attend.
Any other Consul?
Who I think, I believe is better.
Consul Kusinski? That's it? That's it? Consul Peak?
Yeah, I would also, just one thing I forgot to say, the one reason I think that it would be a good thing is that it would, I think it would help us to, so that when we're talking, and I think Consuls Sarret sort of referred to this, but I just wanted to put a slightly finer point on it, that it would allow, so that when we're talking, when we're hearing testimony from the public, it's sort of segmented by topic. I think that there was, I forget which issue it was before us, it might have been the ceasefire resolution, but it was, it was one of the very sort of tense, or, you know, and heated, and people were very passionate in line, and then one person came to just speak and be like, well, I just wanted to say that the sidewalks on my street need maintenance. And it just sort of felt like this, it's very strange, like, I just kind of feel like that it makes a lot of sense to, if we're going to have these, you know, big discussions, to sort of group them in a way that I can, it just makes it a little bit easier for people like me to digest. So that was just another thought.
Any other Consul? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes.
Thank you. We do have the second matter, which was also voted on by the Rules and Government Relations Committee, 2 to 0, and again, for the same reason, the injury to the counselor. It is a little simpler, it just is a rule change to Rule 5C, which accounts for using a following form, and that's the language that is added here. Let me go into the history just a bit, a bit. The purpose why we're here is to discuss public business and to be public and transparent about it. We have an agenda. The items that we present go to the clerk, then get put on the agenda. The press and any members of the public, what they get to say is the agenda. So if the agenda doesn't really get into the meat of the matter, then you could be talking about something very different than what is cryptically written very simply in three or four words. This, this measure helps to stretch that out and give us some more information, and I think that's really important for transparency and for the public. And I hope that the public is able then to better take notice and come to the meetings, or call us, or text us, get to us. That's why we're here. The matter was brought forward by Consul Sarret, and I'd like to.
And Consul Gomez.
And Consul Gomez, yes, that was the Consul Sarret and Consul Gomez. But driven, driven by him, and I wanted to thank him personally for that. I think the idea is very helpful. Consul Gomez took charge of it, and the city clerk, who also is the clerk to the council, was instrumental into helping to develop the form. And it took some time, and she had it all organized and everything's nice. That's Barbara La Bombard. And she is terrific, and I could go over and read the whole form. I'll try to summarize it, I think that would be helpful. It just lays out a process where you have a title, you have the proposal, you have written which committee it's likely to go to, and while I'm on the subject of committees, it helps to establish for the committee some sort of context also, in addition to informing the public how this developed and what it, where we're headed with this matter. So which, which committee, is it a request for immediate consideration? The chapter and section number is identified to be amended. That way, you're not just saying, oh, let's study flowers at the pond or around town. It's, it would have a category, it would be listed, you would know what you're discussing and what is to be amended or changed or added to. There's a short summary of the proposal. The expectation is that it be two or three sentences, and that would go on to the agenda. That would be the purpose. So that's a summary of the form. I'd be happy to make the motion.
Make the motion, and then we can discuss it.
Move to amend Rule 5C by adding the following after the word packet in the reading, by adding using the following form, and then description of the form. Motion would be again.
I have a motion and a second to amend Consul Rule 5C. Any further discussion? Consul Derby?
I think this is a good idea. I have one request, which is, I think that we should request that the clerk put this into Google Forms and email it to everybody, so we don't have to print something out, and, or we don't have to download a PDF and try to type on over, we should have a Google Form that is dedicated with all the questions that we can just click on and be able to auto-populate. So that would be my one request.
If I may, I would think that matter could be handled administratively with the clerk, and I certainly feel free to talk to the clerk. I think that we shouldn't abandon for the written form, just in case some people just feel more comfortable with the written form. So it'd be available to counselors for presentation either way.
Yeah.
But certainly, the Google Docs idea is a great one.
Any other Consul? Consul Sarret?
Yeah, and actually, that request was brought up by Consul Denham, too, at the meeting. I thought it was a good point. I mean, in general, I don't want to get too off the topic, but we should look to electrify, not in the way that shocks you, but the way that you can access it electronically, all of our forms, that's all. You know, this is, this has been a topic of conversation, actually, for a while, as some of the members of the council will remember. We had introduced a similar idea like this a few years ago, but I think we missed the mark, and it got voted down. What it suggested was that the person introducing it could give a brief synopsis, and I think there were some valid concerns about how that could go awry. And then in speaking with Consul Gomez, we already have a similar process. When we introduce requests for financial appropriations, we have a form that's read. And I said, well, why, why don't we just do that? We said, why don't we just do that for all other measures? And so the intention here is that when new business is introduced, it will get read into the record at the meeting, just like you read an appropriation into the record at the meeting. So every item that's read is basically treated the same way. I appreciate both my, the efforts of my collaborator to make this work, but again, big shout-out to Barbara La Bombard for taking the initial draft and actually making it something functional. This is great. Thank you to the Rules Committee for their consideration. And yeah, I think this, again, will make our process more transparent for the public, more transparent for the council and other municipal stakeholders, so looking forward to this being implemented.
Thank you. Any other Consuls? Before the vote, Consul Kusinski?
Just probably because my other side of my brain says, well, you'd like to keep an option open for other things, and maybe this ties it down too much, just in case people did want to discuss flowers on the pond, and that was something that was urgent for the whole community and didn't quite fit the box, that I think counselors should feel free to submit that to the clerk, and then upon, it be included in the packet, and then be a request to resuspend the rules at the next meeting. So there's that other flexibility still open to people.
Thank you. I'm going to add a few things to wrap up this. Why I introduced this with Consul Sarret is to avoid open meeting law violations. As soon as we, Consuls introduce something, most of the time, I would say 99% of the time, we send, we send that item or that topic to the committee. And sometimes, when we send stuff to the committee, if we have five counselors participating in a, in a committee, there's a full council quorum, and two of those counselors are not going to be allowed to speak. So to avoid that, we're introducing this, this new rule. We don't want to be complicated, right? We don't want to make everything more complicated, but we want to make everything more transparent. That's why we're doing this, is we don't want to give it a, give it a hard time to anyone, or create more process just to create the process, is again, to avoid open meeting law, and to give it more guidance to the committees when they receive the item. Basically, that's the idea behind it, and I will, thank you, Consul Sarret, and I will say thank you publicly to our city clerk for the great job that she did with the, with the form. Any other Consuls? Before I take the vote? For those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes.
This concludes.
We have to extend.
Oh, and we would ask for the extensions on the remaining item. Consul Denham's request to review rules regarding the council meetings, 90 days, please. We are making progress on that, I will say.
We have a motion and a second to extend it for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes. Thank you, Consul Kusinski. Old business.
Yeah, so we have some old business, which is the citizen request that was originally referred to us from the mayor, and I believe Consuls Sarret had resubmitted it as per the charter and included some additional information, quite a bit of additional information. So I guess I'll pass it over to Consuls Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yeah, just, this is certainly a good idea. We have rules in the charter about how citizen requests are handled, but also just in terms of general submission of materials, we also have Rule 5C, which we just mentioned. So I just wanted to make sure that we were following our typical protocols. This was sponsored by a counselor, and seeing that there was not a petition that accompanied this from a citizen, I wanted to make sure that this was shepherded through in an appropriate way. I believe that the materials submitted fulfill both our charter and council rules at this point, and so I would like to make a recommendation that this be sent to Public Safety.
I have a motion and a second to send the citizen request referred by the mayor to consider a citywide limit to the Public Safety Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes. New business, Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first request is for immediate consideration. We need to approve the warrant for the November 5 state election. So I would, in the form of a motion, ask that we approve the warrant for the November 5 state election.
Second.
Just for the public, because the microphone was off, can you please repeat the motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the warrant for the November 5 state election.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the state election for the November 5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, thank you. Motion passes.
And now what everybody's been waiting for. We have the resolution in support of the 2024 state ballot question number four. Consul Sarret, do you want to take this?
Sure, but obviously with deference to my co-sponsors, I'll lead it off if that's okay. So thank you to Consuls Derby and Riley for co-sponsoring this important resolution, and certainly thank you to the public for speaking to it earlier, just for the, so the public is aware, and so the council is aware, this was introduced a couple meetings ago initially, and after some, I think, very relevant feedback, a lot of what was spoken to during public speak today, we withdrew it to make sure that we included some of those more salient points, those mostly being around and are included in the resolution about concerns with regulatory capture, the transparency around how the commission would be formed, as well as the general inclusivity of both the advisory board and commission, that it should be certain to include people with appropriate experience in this field, as well as. to include people with appropriate experience in this field as well as lived experiences. The resolution speaks to and will read eventually about making people with expertise in herbalism, people who have experiences as psychedelic guides, indigenous practices, et cetera. So I very much agree with the people who spoke earlier that we don't, we want to do this right. We have two other places that have done this so far. We want to learn from both their successes and failures. And there's opportunities with ballot questions pass, and I hope this passes, for these to be cured and amended in the legislature. Just briefly, we're in the middle of a mental health crisis. There's a exceeding number of people with mental health issues now that need to be addressed. There is both a lack of appropriate clinicians to address it as well as significant access issues. And oftentimes, the way that these issues, these conditions are addressed does not necessarily meet the needs of patients. The allopathic pharmaceuticals that we have are certainly not one size fits all and they come with significant side effects. Not to mention that many times we run into the issues of polypharmacy. Not to say that psychedelics are panacea and might not have some side effects, but these are plants that naturally occur and have co-evolved with humankind for thousands and thousands of years. And so our brains have grown with these plants, just as these plants have grown with our brains. And we see shamans, other herbalists, as well as even early transition into what we call now Western medicine, using these plants until they were deemed illegal in the early 1900s, when Anslinger began his war against drugs and that went all the way up to Nixon and beyond. And we're now just emerging from what I think is a severe error of history over a century of criminalizing substances that have served humankind for millennia. So I was very happy to support this and very happy to partner with Counselors Riley and Darby. One of the first things Counselor Darby and I bonded over was our understanding about how these plants can really help people. Also, just to follow up on the resolution that we supported, and I think Counselor Darby was one of the co-sponsors as well in 2021, which basically spoke to kind of where we are now. And this actually is a good demonstration of government in progress, right? So three years later, after a lengthy discussion about just the concept of wanting to decriminalize psychedelics, here we are with a real ballot question and an opportunity to actually put words in legislation into action. I don't want to forget the fact that Representative Sabadosa sent a very poignant letter to this council to speak to this. I very much appreciate not only her support of the ballot measure and the vision to make this a ballot measure, as well as the fact that she would take time to send a letter to this council and support. Additionally, I want to thank all the advocates who gave input because I think that what is here and what was provided to us, thank you, makes this even better. And again, provides a voice of the people to this, not just a rubber stamp of a ballot initiative. So I'm very much hoping that the council will support this, but even more so, I'm just hoping that this ballot measure passes to bring much needed medicine and empowerment to people for a plant that has a substantial amount of therapeutic efficacy. So thank you.
Before you're reading the resolution, I have to ask, is any counselor against to pass this tonight?
Can I say something?
To vote act?
To vote, yeah.
Excuse me, can you clarify what you just said?
To vote for this resolution tonight.
Either for immediate consideration.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Counselor Sarit? Want to read it? That's a motion?
Yes. I guess the co-sponsors will have an opportunity afterwards to speak if they wanted to. Okay, I just want to make sure that they.
Yeah, it's a part of the.
Okay, so in the form of a motion, I'll read this into the record. Resolution for the Massachusetts State Ballot, question four, decriminalize natural psychedelics for therapeutic use. Whereas one in three Massachusetts residents struggle with mental health challenges and whereas pioneering research from Johns Hopkins and Harvard Medical School finds that natural psychedelics can be effective in managing treatment-resistant depression, other forms of mental illness. And whereas the FDA recently granted psilocybin, one of the psychedelics, a breakthrough therapy designation for treatment-resistant depression. And whereas natural psychedelics have been found to treat severe forms of mental illness, including PTSD, anxiety, depression, some forms of addiction. And whereas the U.S. Department for Veteran Affairs, National Center for PTSD recognizes psychedelic medicines as an emerging therapeutic opportunity to treat PTSD and other forms of mental health conditions. And whereas therapeutic psychedelics have been proven to relieve existential stress at end of life, transforming the death and dying process for people in palliative and healthy hospice care. And whereas psychedelic medicines offer promised clinical solutions for alcohol and substance use disorders. And whereas in 2021, the City Council of East Hampton approved a resolution, quote, "protecting adult access to plant medicines," quote. And whereas clinical care must focus on all viable patient care options, not solely work within a framework dictated by the pharmaceutical industry and Western medicine. And whereas the ballot question would create a regulated framework for psychedelic assisted therapy for adults 21 and older, similar to ballots passed in Colorado in 2022 and Oregon in 2020. And whereas the ballot question would decriminalize five natural occurring psychedelic substances. And whereas the ballot initiative represents an important step forward in regulating natural psychedelic substances, concerns remain about fair and democratic governance when applied. And whereas herbalists, indigenous practitioners, and those with traditional ecological knowledge should be consulted, respected, and empowered to show deference to their knowledge in history. Be it, I should just say, be it resolved, that the city council calls on the state legislature to continue the following amendments to strengthen community representation, increase transparency, and safeguard equitable access if the ballot measure passes. One, implement a more democratic and transparent appointment process for the Natural Psychedelic Substance Commission. Two, modify the composition of the Natural Psychedelic Substance Commission to include seven commissioners, in which the majority have expertise in herbalism, indigenous practices, or traditional ecological knowledge related to natural psychedelic substances. Three, strengthen the Natural Psychedelic Substances Advisory Board by increasing membership from people with backgrounds in herbalism, indigenous practices, and community organizations. Four, the commission and advisory board should hold joint public hearings to gather community input on regulations implementation of the natural psychedelics program. Now be it further resolved that on this day, the 9th of October, 2024, that the East Hampton City Council supports the natural psychedelic ballot question to expand much needed options for mental health care across all patient populations in the Commonwealth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to support the resolution of 2024 State Ballot, question number four. Any further discussion? Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, before I give my remarks, you know, I'm going to talk about some personal experiences. And I recognize that even sitting at this bench, I have a sort of authority and power that should make me less nervous, but it does still make me nervous. And so I wanted to take this quick moment to thank all of you that spoke on this issue. I know that not having the kind of positional authority that I have with my microphone, I also get more time to talk about these things than you did. This is a very hard thing to open up about trauma and healing in a public setting when you're being recorded. So I just wanted to honor that and thank you all. So five years ago, I responded to an advertisement on social media seeking human subject volunteers to participate in a medical study conducted by Yale University in the VA Hospital in West Haven, Connecticut. The study was to test the efficacy of synthetic ketamine infusions in soldiers with PTSD returning from active duty. So you see, prior to the advancements in global transportation technology, it could take soldiers several weeks or months from the time that they left active war zones to be fully acclimated back into society. Today, that can take hours or days, leaving veterans with little time to process the extremes of modern warfare on their psyche. As soldiers re-enter society, the abrupt transition often exacerbates the prevalence of PTSD, making it challenging for them to reintegrate into civilian life. The mental toll of their experiences combined with the rapid shift from combat to home leaves many struggling with anxiety, depression, and flashbacks, underscoring the urgent need for novel and effective treatments as they navigate the complex journey of healing. Now, I know the public knows this, and you all have, that I've spoken in this room before about my history with poverty and homelessness and domestic violence. Coupled with the traumatic experience of witnessing the sudden death of a childhood friend, being a youth in America where public shootings become commonplace, and learning what it meant to be gay from watching news coverage of Matthew Shepard's murder, and watching my mother die from leukemia when she was only 36 years old. Every waking moment of my youth was consumed by the idea that at any given moment, I or someone I love could die, or that in an instant, I could lose access to basic securities like a roof over my head or food to eat. Even if a psychedelic experience couldn't help me, my altruistic nature felt compelled to let doctors study my trauma before and after therapy to ascertain its benefits for veterans, though I'd be lying if I said I wasn't desperate for a self-actualizing breakthrough. Over the course of a few days, psychologists took a careful and compassionate inventory of my entire life's trauma and suffering. They ran physical and medical tests to ensure that I was healthy and capable of receiving the treatment. And then when approved, I underwent a series of MRIs to map my brain to understand where trauma exists and if the treatment actually heals trauma. On the day of the infusion, I was given an IV, placed into an MRI machine, and notified that the infusion would start. Within just a few moments, the things that we commonly think of as reality began to dissipate. I lost my vision, the sense of sound, sensations of touch such as the wind that was blowing through the MRI machine, or how cold I was, and even my spatial awareness simply became brown. It was in the brownness of that last thought that I had, this must be death before fully surrendering to the loss of self and before having a deeply spiritual reawakening two hours later. I had successfully undergone the psychological concept of ego, death, and rebirth. It is a common element of psychedelic therapy. I can't explain where I went, but I left an awful lot of my pain and suffering before I came back to reality. In the days that followed, I worked with a psychologist to engage in a meaning-making process about my trauma and different exposure therapy sessions. More than finding forgiveness, I was able to humanize my abusers. I began to sleep better at night. And instead of dreading the day that my husband or my children might die, I began to cherish the days that I shared with them. I started to fly in airplanes for work and for vacations with no fear of dying in a plane crash. It's what gave me the courage to run for public office and to then turn around two years later and let the public weigh my intentions and actions as a city counselor for reelection. So in all of the ways that I hoped it would, psychedelics healed me in a well-regulated therapeutic setting. And I know that it heals veterans too. I share my story with you because there's a lot of stigma in our society about what psychedelics are and what they do. I'm here to tell you that there is nothing that you should be afraid of. If in these last five years that I've worked with you all in the city, that you've had a positive impact in your life because of something that I've done, if I've made you feel seen, if I've advocated for your well-being, or for all of the appointees that come before the city council, when I thank them for their service to the city of East Hampton, it's because of the empathy and the gratitude that psychedelic therapy gave to me. I couldn't be any of these things that I am today without first having that experience. I know that naturally occurring psychedelics offer the same experience, and that's why I'm in support of this. Aside from healing childhood trauma or helping veterans return to civilian life, psychedelic therapy can also help our family members who are dying of terminal diseases find acceptance during end-of-life care. It can help survivors of sexual and domestic violence feel safe in the presence of love once more. And across the Commonwealth, about one in three residents have experienced some level of trauma in their life. And with the appropriate level of therapeutic oversight, they too may be able to self-actualize the same way that I did, but only if the public votes yes on question four. I'll be the first to say that this type of treatment, it's not for everyone, but for those who it's for, it means everything. Please vote with your heart. You could be giving the gift of healing to your friends, your family members, and your neighbors who are probably suffering in silence. In the days leading up to the election, I'm happy to answer any questions that either of you or members of the public have about my experience. But for now, I'm proud to vote yes on this resolution, and I will vote yes in November. Thank you for hearing what I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Pete?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's a kind of hard act to follow. So, all right. I just wanted to say one thing because it just really struck me when we were hearing testimony earlier. And that's, this is sort of a nerdy point, but as a UMass educated economist, the number of people in their 20s in this room using the phrase regulatory capture correctly is just remarkable. Just the idea that we've figured out, like, that terms like that have found their way into this shows a level of sophistication in the way that people are talking about public policy in ballot questions. And I think that they should be commended for taking that really, really seriously. I've been involved in a lot of ballot campaigns and it's not always like that. So good on you. In terms of the rest of this, like, look, I'm not a doctor. I haven't read any of these studies. If I read any of these studies, I wouldn't understand them. So I can't really speak to a lot of that. I do know people, I won't name them obviously, but I do know people who have really benefited psychologically and emotionally from the use of mushrooms, people I really, really care about. And so it would, it is important to me. Just, I can look at this and say, well, it clearly works for some of them. Even without any of that, I just personally am somebody who believes that consenting adults should be able to make decisions about what they do with their bodies. And that includes what chemicals they want to put in their bodies. And I believe that about alcohol, I believe that about cigarettes, I believe that about cannabis, I believe that about marijuana, like, or about, I'm sorry, about psilocybin. Like, I just think that broadly, like, it hasn't ever really been shown to me that prohibition and the war on drugs has ever been effective with anything. And so as much as I appreciate a lot of the really powerful stories about how this has benefited people, I also just think that it's a sort of silly and backwards exercise to try and prohibit it. I also think it's really interesting to see, and again, just shows the level of sort of policy sophistication here, to have people talking about sort of the balance of power on these regulatory commissions that might come into place. And, you know, this is something that I think probably if you're sophisticated enough to be making these arguments, you know, but just putting it out there, every single question that passes on the ballot, I want to say maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's one or two. I've never been involved in a ballot question that passed and was not then further amended by the legislature. So whenever there's a ballot question, getting it passed is just the start of the ballot. And then you have to deal with a completely different. and then you have to deal with a completely different and challenging situation of dealing with a rather opaque state legislature instead of just individual voters. But I also don't think, what that has taught me over the time is that I don't think that an imperfect ballot question is reason ever to vote against a ballot measure, because a lot of the times, if you can just get the broad strokes of something defined to say, hey, we want this legalized, then exactly, like, everyone, I think that the state always understands that what people are really voting on is, should it be legalized, not what should be the precise representation of people on the theoretical, to-be-determined regulatory commission that would regulate it. So I do think that that is something that, I completely understand people's concerns about it, and I would also say, it's not been a detriment for me in my being supportive of this. I was a signatory on this ballot question, and all of that does not dissuade me. Like, you gotta go and make the sausage on the other end of this one way or another, but I do think, like, this could be written however you want it to be written, and you're gonna be back in that situation when it passes one way or another. So I'm not overly worried about that. I'm supportive of this. I'm very proud of all the young people who came out and made very sophisticated and thoughtful arguments about why we should do this, and that's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kucinski.
I will be brief and not reiterate what everyone else has said tonight. I think the personal opening up, I'll say, of those individuals who spoke to us tonight is not only educative for the members of this council, but I think for the general public who watches what we see on the streaming or on cable TV and through the press. And we appreciate having that message be delivered. I think by having the personal side helps to enable individuals to see that those who need, those who are in need, those who will do anything to get better, anything to heal, try whatever may still be available, just should never be denied, that opportunity. And for society to say no should never happen. It's a human right to do whatever you need to do to heal, to be better, and to survive. I support this wholeheartedly. When it comes to the formulation of the review committee, Counselor Pete, you spoke to it very well, I think, in describing, well, this is gonna go to the legislature, and they're gonna do what they're gonna do, so there's a lot more work. So the public must understand, the work must be done, but I think there has to be a respect for those indigenous and herbalistic populations that have dealt with this. They're the experts. They're the people who have the experience that should be leading and showing the way, not profit motive industry, stock markets, stock value. They should be advisory to the committee. They should be advising the committee, and those who have the experience and the ability to make this available to the public should be the ones in control. That's my two cents on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. For me, this is about righting another wrong. You know, as with cannabis and the work that we did with cannabis, you know, it was really a little bit contentious. People had their opinions, and the sky was falling if, you know, cannabis was gonna get legalized, but, you know, I think some of us knew that it was rooted in racist and, you know, really kind of, the origins of prohibition were not pure. It wasn't because of the social harms that it caused, it was because of who used it. It was because of who wasn't making profit from it. And, you know, it kind of like makes me ask the question, who decides what drugs are good? And at the end of the day, is it the pharmaceutical companies that have the billions of dollars to do the, you know, clinical trials and say that their drug is okay, like OxyContin, right? Really okay? And because my doctor prescribed it, it's okay, and so I can take it, and that's fine. You know, and that's crazy. And we know that we have, you know, hundreds of thousands of years of evidence, well, evidence isn't hundreds of thousands of years old, but we know that we've been developing for at least 300,000 years as what we are now. And we know that, you know, plant-based medicine has been a part of that, and, you know, and probably is a part of who we are today in some form. And I think that as we right wrongs, it's important to, you know, do things like this to help people demystify the, you know, the fog that is around these types of drugs because there have been so many, you know, false claims and scare tactics and misinformation. And really, you know, humans have been using these for, you know, so long as part of rites of passage ceremonies. And it's not just like one place was using this as a rite of passage ceremony, it was across the planet. People were finding ways to change their consciousness. And, you know, so I think that this is being able to help right the ship, and I think, I appreciate my fellow sponsors, what they said, you know, oh, and going into, you know, Anslinger and, you know, the war on drugs, because at the end of the day, there was amazing research being done with psilocybin, you know, up until the war on drugs, when it got rescheduled and it was basically made illegal, and all of that research stopped, even though it was promising and it was really, really powerful. And so now it's time for us to be able to take that back, to right these wrongs. You know, and personally, you know, I could go, and Counselor Riley, I appreciate your stories, you know, and that's moving, and I think everybody's stories are really moving. I think it's really important for us to understand, you know, I have many people that I have known that went to jail for possession of psilocybin, right? Like, and that's another wrong that we have to right. And so, for me, this was a no-brainer. And, you know, I think that things will get worked out on the tail end once it passes, and we can, you know, again, voice our concerns to the legislature, which I think we did well in this resolution, and this will get sent to them. So we just need to stay, you know, diligent and, you know, circle back to it. So I appreciate everybody coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I want to thank the community for coming and speaking. I want to thank councilors for their words and their comments. I also want to acknowledge that with this resolution, the fight is only beginning. And I think that needs to be made very clear, that this resolution going to them is really just giving them the okay to pass whatever it is that they want to pass, as Counselor Pete said, that they're gonna rewrite this, et cetera, et cetera. But if this council, this community, the people who spoke, if they really, truly want the representatives of that commission to be balanced, or actually to be in favor of those communities, indigenous communities, herbalist communities, et cetera, to have more say in that commission, then there needs to be more organizing that needs to happen. I think right now, that's not a guarantee. And so I think I agree with everything that's being said, and the fight is actually only just beginning to make sure that those things happen, so I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one, well, a few points. As a sociologist, I think that I want to bring up a point particularly to anyone listening at home. Very often, and a lot of this has already been covered, but I want to contextualize it. You know, I'm a Gen Xer. I grew up during the 80s and 90s to the rhetoric of, say, no to drugs, war on drugs and everything. And I remember being socialized into believing that very, very hard. As a sociologist, I'm aware that a lot of your first response to things that are new and different is your socialized response. It makes sense that in a society that criminalized any sort of drugs that were not based on germ theory to really be considered either weird or scary or different, I can understand that. It's your socialized response. I think the one group that I don't see mentioned that I want to give my support to are the educators within the community, those who really have taken substantial risks for your own self. This is a very interesting social movement because it's all for the rights of someone else to be able to seek relief from this. And I just want to really acknowledge that, even with Counselor Riley, the discussion that you gave was also an approved study, so there is a bit of safety to that. And so I just want to acknowledge that, that to come up to the podium for this particular matter, or to stay in the audience when, for many people, there's a lot personally at risk, I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank everyone for coming out.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Otero.
Oh, I just want to say, first off, thank you to Counselor Riley for opening up like that, and thank you for everybody who came to speak tonight, because I know that's not an easy thing to do. It's not easy for us to, as Counselor Riley said, not easy for us to sit up here and speak, either microphone or no microphone. With that being said, I fully support, and am very hopeful for the medicinal benefits, current and potential benefits for psychedelic substances. I cannot say I feel the same way about it being legal for anybody over 21 to possess, use, or grow said substances. Those seem to be two different subjects that should be addressed separately. And because of that, I don't think I can support this resolution this evening because of that.
Any other Counselors? Counselor Sarit?
I just want to say quickly, too, just to clarify, when we do these kinds of processes, sometimes with a lot of important public input, I'm very careful, as much as I want to publicly acknowledge people, not to name names, because for various reasons, people might want to be helpful behind the scenes but remain anonymous. So since I didn't ask people's permission, I didn't think I had to ask people's permission if I can announce their names here at this meeting, that's why I've only made vague references. But I will say that I'm very grateful, from when we started this work in 2021 to now, there are certainly people present who have been both historically and more acutely wonderful members of this community who have enlightened me as to the power and the community surrounding this, as well as many that I've met recently who were able to provide us with the language to really write this ship in terms of making this. So thank you to all of you, and I'm really proud that East Hampton is a place that has such a community that's welcoming to this. So that's the only reason I didn't mention anyone's name, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor who will take the vote?
Now, I just want to say something really quick. Thank you. Simple as that, thank you. It's a possibility that we only have to convince 159 of the state reps, because it's a possibility that one of these guys here is gonna be the next state rep, the number 160. So that person will bring your concerns, your story, to be con hoon, because it's important for them to understand why this is important. I make a commitment today that I'm gonna be your voice there, and gonna push for the best for the community. Saying that, any further discussion? There will be add. For those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion passes. One against it. Mr. Vice President.
And so we have one more piece for immediate consideration, which is the request to increase its senior tax work-off program. I believe that's Counselor Pete. Is it?
Let me just move it to the finance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just move it to finance, then. I moved that it goes to finance. Confuse me.
I have a motion and a second for the request to increase the senior tax work-off program, abatement from 1,500 to 2,000 to the Finance Committee.
It looks like it's under request for immediate.
That was just my mistake.
No, that was just a format attack.
Yes, it was, and so that's why we are moving it.
All right, cool. Just making sure. Did that right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Derby?
So we have two, or a couple of ordinance amendment proposals, so one to amend Chapter Eight to add Section 8-36, East Hampton Trophy Ordinance, I moved that we move that to Ordnance Committee.
Second.
Are you moving both or just?
Oh, yeah, and I can also move the amending several sections of Chapter Two, Division Three, Council on Aging.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move those two items to the Ordnance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes.
And we also have a proposal to reverse traffic direction on Daily Field in Non-Tuck Park, Daily Field Road in Non-Tuck Park. I moved that we send that to Public Safety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the proposal for the reverse of the traffic direction of Daily Field to the Public Safety Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Derby, sorry.
Yeah, we also have a supplemental appropriation, $60,000 for upgrades of Parks and Rec Department facilities. I don't know if we need to do a first reading on that.
I guess I can.
So I'll pass that over to Counsel Pete.
All right, I'll make this first reading as a, in part of a motion and also to set a hearing for October 16th and 15th. 16th?
The 16th or 15th?
Wait, 16th is...
I think it's the 23rd.
No, sorry, October 3rd.
23rd, okay. All right, October 23rd at 15.
I'm looking at numbers. The 23rd.
Okay. So request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation amount requested $60,000 to be transferred from general stabilization, $60,000 to be transferred to park site improvement, $60,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, Parks and Recreation Facility Upgrade Proposal to upgrade the Parks and Recreation Department's facilities.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $60,000 in order to upgrade the Park and Recreation Department facilities to the Finance Committee and to schedule a proper hearing, October 23rd, at 15 at these chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Wonderful evening.
We have to sign off.
Yes, please don't go.